The chairman will rule whether the additional items being offered will be accepted or rejected. The persons presenting which the case which may be also may also withdraw their documents. Each case will be presented by a zoning staff member. Once the BZA staff presentation is complete, the appellant will have the opportunity to present their case. Following the appellant's presentation, the chairman will ask if anyone is opposed to the appeal to speak. Next, the board will motion to close the public portion of the hearing. Then the individual board members may ask anyone who has testified to return to the podium for additional questions. Following the board's questions, a motion and a second will be made by the board to either approve or deny the appeal. Finally, respect for this process is with one another is paramount. The deliberations for each case are taken seriously by the board. Likewise, it is an expectation that respect will be accorded to everyone regardless of any emotion that may be involved. No disruptive behavior will be tolerated. This extends to all who have testified as well as members of the audience. Anyone being disruptive will be asked to leave the hearing room. Thank you for your patience and your attention. Do a roll call, please.
Mr. Bartold? Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Roberto?
Here.
Mr. Renninger?
Here. We noticed that we are missing a member. We will call for our alternate and we'll call for Mr. Kelly. Please make a note that Mr. Kelly is taking a board seat. Those of you that are going to testify, I would ask of you, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm that you will tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth that matters before the Board of Zoning Appeals? Say "I do." You may be seated. Thank you. Our first case is BZA 2015-11. It is a variance to construct a new 6,900 square foot space for the relocation of Cincinnati's Bank. It is referenced in Article Section 8.3.1 and Article 13.5.1 and Article 14.3 as well as Article 14.5.2 in our zoning book. The location of the property is 3664 and 3672 Springdale Road. The applicant is Rob. And I'm going to look at his name, please forgive me. S-Mias?
Smijunas.
Smijunas, thank you very much. And Vanderkar Holdings. The owner is Cincinnati Savings and Loan Company. Does staff know of a presentation?
Yes, sir, we do.
Thank you.
Lucky for me, I have a little more experience announcing Smijunas. The application before you is for variance of minimum lot area, minimum buffer yards, and landscaping for the location, as you said, at 3664 and 3672 Springdale Road. Applicant applied for a zoning certificate for a 6,900 square foot building for the relocation of Cincinnati's Bank and was denied that application in need of the three variances listed before you. This location should be familiar to you. It's right up the road. What you'll see on this image here is... Give me one second. Let me find my pointer. There it is. This is Springdale Road and Colrain Avenue to the east. Site in question is directly adjacent to the new Kroger development. It is zoned for B2 as is the Kroger development to the east. And all of the property to the west along Springdale Road to Flat Top is also zoned B2 aside from the parcel immediately adjacent to the west, which is still zoned R4. The property behind the proposed development is also zoned R4. Proposal includes development on a parcel that is just under one acre, which is required at the required minimum by the B2 zoning district. The parcel actually comes out to .94 acres. So we tried. We couldn't round up to... Couldn't round up to one, so we're just barely outside of that minimum. 6,900 square foot two-story building is proposed in approximately the same location as an existing structure. Additionally, a drive-through facility is also proposed with that 6,900 square foot The approximate setback is 40 feet and the drive-through facility is approximately 20 feet from the property line. This is the proposed parking, which is mostly in the... On the Springdale side of the building. Handful of spaces in the rear of the building near the dumpster facilities. 25 feet of buffering is proposed between the rear pavement and the abutting residential to the north. It's difficult to see, but this line along the west of the property, there is a requirement for a 40-foot buffer yard along the west side of the property as well as the rear yard of the property because it abuts residential on each of those sides. I would like to point out that this property immediately to the west is that one kind of broken tooth in the zoning that is still zoned for R4. This particular property to the west does appear to be primed for redevelopment and the entire property from the proposed development all the way to Flat Top is rezoned aside from this piece to B2 and looks to be ready for development. So staff is interested in seeing that there is some sort of buffer maintained along this side. What is existing, I'll show you in some images coming up, is actually... It is more of a buffer than it appears from this... From this particular vantage point. There is a buffer yard in the front of the property as well. The two access points closest to the Kroger development will be closed. The access point on the west side of the property along Springdale will be widened to a two-way entrance and exit. And then there will be access to... Into the Kroger development to the northeastern side of the property. Just to give you an idea of what we're looking at here, that white building on the left of the picture is the approximate location of the newly proposed building. This is looking roughly from the middle of the site north. This is looking across the front property line with what exists today. This is looking north along the eastern property line. Again, another image of the front of the property. This is looking along the west... Looking to the north along the western side property line. And that is that the buffer yard that is required to be 40 feet for this development to occur, but that is what is existing there. It's quite a bit of buffering. This is looking towards the back of the property. On the left of your screen there would be where you will see the vegetation that is screening the residential behind the property. Looking back south onto the property from the rear and then across the property. Again, from the rear, what you see just to the right of the existing structure there is again that vegetation along the western properties. So with respect to the specific variances that have been requested, the minimum one acre, staff's found that the proposed development does sit right at .94 acres. And staff feels that enforcing the minimum would render this prop... The one acre minimum would render this property undevelopable without significant burden on the owner to acquire some of those adjacent parcels. With respect to the landscaping and buffering, there is a required 40 feet of buffering between that R4 district. And remember, we're looking at this in two different areas in the rear of the property to the north. The applicant is proposing a 25-foot buffer. And just to clarify what they are actually proposing, they are proposing three evergreen trees and six shrubs along that back property line as well as a six-foot high fence on the applicant's side of that buffer. So the landscaping would be on the residential side and then buffered with a fence on the Along the western side, staff feels that enforcing the buffer yard would require that nearly 40% of the proposed development would be devoted to buffer, making the site undevelopable from a practical standpoint. Excuse me, that was for the entire buffering requirement. The staff finds that the variance requested are not substantial. Property in question would not likely yield a reasonable return without the variance. The owner's predicament, particularly given the minimum acreage requirement, would not be feasibly obviated by other means. The variance would not adversely affect the delivery of government services and the essential character of the neighborhood would not be immediately negatively impacted if these variances were granted. Staff does find that substantial justice would be done by granting the variance with the condition... With the condition. And that condition being that the applicant demonstrate that all other sections of the zoning resolution be met, including but not limited to outdoor lighting standards as well as the streetscaping plan, which would include lighting and landscaping along Springdale Road frontage, would require that that be installed and spaced consistently with the neighboring proper development. Clear, Smid? Be happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant present?
My name is Kate Dragon with Vanderkar Holdings, 5027 Madison Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45227. Thank you for your time this evening. Staff floor, I think, was very thorough in having answered the questions. I would like to point out a couple of... A couple of the conditions that relate to the variance to be requested. First of all, property is currently two parcels, one being the existing Cincinnati's Bank, the other being a building that's used as a commercial office building. I would point out that the owner, Cincinnati Savings, has made attempts to acquire the property to the west and has been unsuccessful in reaching any kind of arrangement in that regard, which limits their ability to address the one acre size limitation. The current commercial uses on the property have substantial amount of parking to the rear of the buildings now towards the residential subdivision. This new plan would move most of it towards the north. In addition, along that northerly property line, despite the variance being requested to go under the 40 feet of total buffer yard area, the buffer yard area is substantially more as proposed than it is currently... Currently along that northern line, it varies from around five feet to around 15 feet in depth. And the proposed buffer yard would be 25 feet in depth. So it's a pretty substantial increase in total landscape variance back along with all the additional landscape plantings that are proposed along with the application. With regard to the western buffer yard, we're essentially maintaining the area that's there now and adding additional landscaping materials and fencing to improve the buffer yard. It's a somewhat similar condition to what's there now. There's a driveway about five feet away. We're in a driveway about five feet away from that property line. We're essentially maintaining that dimension and supplementing the buffer yard with plantings and the fencing. So with that, we'd like to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone speaking in opposition?
I'll move that we close the public portion of the hearing.
Second?
Motion, second, to close the public portion. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Roberto?
Aye.
Mr. Renninger?
Aye.
We need to change the order of that so that I'm last, please.
Yes, sir.
So the public portion has been closed. We'll go to the board member questions. Mr. Martin?
Well, I think you've answered one of my questions about the westernmost property because the concern I have, well, two concerns. One's fairly selfish. I like that white building, unfortunately. It kind of lends a little character to the town, but apparently that's not going to be able to succeed in standing. And I understand why. The concern I have, though, is that western parcel, I don't know what those people have in mind. And I don't presume that anyone here knows what they have in mind, but the concern I would have is that they're going to come in and say... And get a rezoning for business and try to convince us that we should allow another business on that particular parcel of less than half an acre. Whereas it makes most sense, and you've already alluded to this, to combine that parcel and your parcel, which would be a little bit more than an acre. Be, I guess, they're a little less than a half acre. Yours is a little less than one acre, so maybe 1.4, 1.3 acres or whatever it would be. But they're not inclined to sell, as I understand it. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Because that does present a problem. And it's not your problem. It's going to be our problem if they come in for rezoning and want to put something there because under our zoning laws, they can't because it's less than a half acre. But otherwise, I mean, I think you've done a terrific job in terms of what you've got here. So I don't really have any concerns. I just wish that there was a way to combine the two parcels because I think that would make the most sense for the town and probably for you as well, but it doesn't seem to be in the cards. Thank you.
Mr. Price?
I just have one question, if you would. You said that along that western side that, like, right now, it appears that you're going to be putting a... The privacy fence around the back, is that going to continue along that western side? Because that's not specific in the plan, but you mentioned it.
Yes, that is the intent, to continue that privacy fence along that property line as well.
Okay. That's really the only question I had.
Mr. Renninger?
Gentlemen, please go back. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name, sir?
Dragon.
Great, thank you, Mr. Dragon. I will make the assumption and confirm that both buildings now in the site will be demolished.
That's correct.
The existing Cincinnati's and the White House.
That's correct.
That's great. The signage was not addressed, or at least I missed that. Will the signage change or be brought in to conform... Lowered, made more...
Yeah, the signage that's out there today is well over what the current zoning code would permit, and a new signage would be installed consistent with the zoning regulations.
Okay, consistent with zoning regulations. Just as a quick aside, do you have any information on how old that white building is?
I don't personally.
1900.
I'm just curious. I mean, there's no historic designation on that structure, is there?
I looked it up. Hamilton County has it, it says 1900.
I'm speaking third-handedly, and my understanding is no, there is not. That's a discussion that came up early on, and I believe it was confirmed. I don't have personal firsthand knowledge of it, that it is not as ordered, so if you have any...
Thank... There's a question to answer. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
I think the only question I have is we've been working to a degree in conjunction with the new Kroger project that's going on to tie fencing and whatnot in, and the things are going to match. Because we're... That big corner area there, I mean, it has potential of looking great, and I think what you've done is fantastic. But do you guys have any dialogue going on with the folks from Kroger?
Yeah, yes, we did. And that's honestly the reason Vanderkar is involved, which we were developing a relationship with Cincinnati through our involvement with Kroger.
Okay.
We're helping assist them in their effort to build a new bank branch update. They're offering their... Kroger is well aware of the project. We've talked to them about including coordination in terms of the access, which would come through that new Kroger signalized access. And so that's something we've been working with them and their engineers to sort of coordinate and make sure it works together as a whole.
Yeah. And my concern would be, I think, you know, there's been some issues with the two banks back there and that, you know, the six-foot fence and then there's a barrier. I'm sure that we've looked into it, that we're going to create a situation where people that are maybe coming from the bank in a hurry are unable to get back into the residential section. So that fence will continue on with the Kroger... Because I haven't seen the Kroger portion of it. I don't think it was mentioned on here.
Yeah, there's a Kroger fence along that property, the western Kroger property.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to follow exactly the...
Well, there's been several robberies in that.
Oh, yeah.
I was trying to put it delicately. Yeah.
Really in a hurry is what you're saying.
Yeah. So, yeah, just to kind of create, you know...
Okay.
Break that... Break that. That's what I'm concerned about, that they can't penetrate that residential neighborhood. The only option they have is to head towards Colrain Avenue. And I guess things like that have been looked into.
I know they've been addressed in the Kroger application, in the Kroger development. So I don't know the specifics of it, but if I understand it correctly, I want to say it's a pretty significant fence. We're talking 10 or...
That's the only question I had. And yours, Tyson, what theirs?
10 or 12 feet, it was pretty...
It's going to look nice for the neighbors and stuff.
Well, it's kind of bittersweet for myself. I actually used to own the property right to the north. Yeah, so I know how much buffer was there, and the neighbors were very good. And I thought that the home was on a historical registry, and I did some investigation into it. But unfortunately, it's not. I love that building, but what you have there, it looks great. I think most of the questions that have been raised, my concern or question is, how did we get one piece of property to the state in an R4 when the rest of them made it into the B2 district?
That was before my tenure here with Colrain. I am not...
You're going to use that excuse there, right?
I am going to use that excuse. I am not privy to the details of what happened there. It's my understanding that that was a decision made for one reason or another, that that property specifically was not rezoned. I can't speak to it anymore in any more detail than that.
And the other thing, what's your current size? What are you currently sitting on as far as property size?
To combine...
What you currently are sitting on, what is it? Is it less than an acre?
This is an as... Yes, it is.
Okay. So it's less than an acre currently. And so, yeah, that's really... That's all the questions I have.
I'll move that we grant them the variance with the conditions as recommended by staff.
I second. Okay. Motion, second, has been made. Roll call, please.
Excuse me. Discussion.
Oh. I keep forgetting that part. Discussion from the... Anyone on the board?
I'm just... I am concerned, and I think what your questions, you indicate, I'm concerned about that one parcel being left there. I don't know what's going to happen there, but it is a shame that they won't cooperate. But...
I have a feeling it's another, you know, person that's just holding out and maybe kind of holding Colrain off, but I don't... Being presumptuous there.
Anyway, that's all I have.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Renninger?
Aye.
Mr. Roberto?
Aye.
Motion has been approved.
Good job. Good luck. Good luck, gentlemen.
All right. We will move on to case number BZA 2015-12. This is a variance for new additional wall signage. It is referenced in our zoning book in Article Section 15.8.3, subsection G number 1. The location is in 9596 Colrain Avenue, Cincinnati, Ohio. The applicant is Nicole Duckworth, ABC Signs Incorporated, and the owner is CP Northgate Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, we do. As mentioned, the variance is requested to add a wall-mounted sign on the west side of the building located on a breezeway facing Colrain Avenue. This is the location of the property. It's difficult to see here, but to give you some orientation, this is Colrain Avenue. Directly across the street to the west is Northgate Mall. And to the north, Springdale. The tenant is located in the northwest corner of the building, approximately here, with no frontage on Colrain Avenue. Again, Colrain Avenue is to the west here. Property is zoned PD-B and is surrounded by pretty much all residential except for to the east where we have a PDR development. The sign... There are two signs that are actually being requested. The one that I mentioned previously is located roughly here on a breezeway facing, again, Colrain Avenue. In red here, you see the tenants... Where the tenant's frontage is actually located, where their storefront and entrance is actually located on this north side of the building. A second sign is being requested for this eastern side, and I'll show you in a couple of images here. This faces the parking area in the rear of the building, has absolutely no visibility from Colrain Avenue. And their frontage would be much more findable, if you will, with the sign on the eastern portion of this building. Give you a look at... This is the front parking lot, Colrain Avenue 2. Your left there, tenant's space, you can't see it. It's actually kind of tucked behind this taller building here. Excuse me, right in front of that taller building. You can see the breezeway just barely between this one-story structure and the taller structure. This is roughly where the sign is being proposed. And again, the tenant's space is under this breezeway to the right in the rear of the This is the tenant's space in the back of the building. You can see on the north side here, this will be their entrance. I believe that that is only 23 feet. They are requesting a sign on this side of the building as well, approximately 49 square feet. But they do... This length is their frontage on the back of that building, and it's just not where their entrance will be. Again, there's that blank wall where they'd like to put that... Their signage. So given this board's recent history to approve signage on multiple sides of buildings where facing an access drive or internal parking area, along with the board's request to look at a text amendment to allow for additional signage in such instances, staff does recommend approval of the two variance requests. Property in question would not likely yield a reasonable return without the variances for signage, and the owner's predicament could not feasibly be obviated by other means. Would not... The variance would not adversely affect the delivery of government services. The essential character of the neighborhood will not negatively be impacted by allowing the additional signage. Taking all of this into consideration, staff does feel that justice would be done by approving the variances for additional signage to be installed on the west elevation of the breezeway and the east facade of tenant's space. And therefore, staff would like to recommend approval of the variances as requested. And I would like to note that you do have in front of you a letter of support from the building owner giving permission to NovaCare to add the signage on the breezeway of the building. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is the applicant present?
Hi, I'm Nicole Duckworth. I'm 7796 Laurel Avenue. I actually think that... I actually think that we might be a little bit confused on the building, on the wall sign along the back, which is probably my fault. It is not actually facing the driveway, it is over the windows in that picture. I don't know if you can go back to that picture, which is actually over the tenant space. So, that could have been my miscommunication to you, Jenna.
Yeah, we discussed that this afternoon.
Right, yeah. So, it is actually over those windows, two of those windows. It doesn't look like at this time they were taking out, two or three of those windows were being removed with the door put into that side, 'cause they split that space. Originally, it was one long space. So, I did want to clear that up, that it is not actually facing the parking lot. Currently, if they are not granted the sign facing Colrain Avenue, they have an 11 by 86-foot tenant panel that goes on that big pylon sign. They're not all that visible at that, you know, short of a height, so you wouldn't really be able to tell. We've been in the shopping center before, I think I was there last month with State Farm. So, it's a little bit of a, an odd development, and they just have to be along the backside of this, so without having anything facing Corian Avenue, it's gonna be very hard for someone to figure out where this is, where this is located.
Anyone else to speak in favor of the DPO? Have you been sworn in, sir?
I, no, I wasn't, I apologize. I wasn't planning on speaking.
Come forward, and we'll swear you in, all right? Do you swear and affirm that you will tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth that matters before the Board of Zoning Appeals? Say, "I do."
I do.
Okay, please state your name and address.
Matt Teesworth, 848 Lyndes Drive. I guess this is probably a question for staff, is, if this variance is approved, will this signage carry over for any future businesses? No, it'd just be strictly for this business, so if they leave, then anybody else would carry over to that?
Yes, please.
The way I understand the way that our code is written is that if it's approved, and this, the sign itself remains on the wall after the tenant leaves, the new tenant could do a face change. But they cannot change the signage without being within the code, and if they're not gonna be within the code, then going back for a request in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
That wasn't necessarily a four, again, so there's the question about the size of it. I did notice that, you know, they did have a banner hanging up on the front, so I didn't show in the pictures. So, on the west side facing Colrain, so it gives it an idea. It looks pretty decent. I did notice also that some of, there's another sign, building sign that was recently removed. Not necessarily to this case, but I know that the board often, you know, looks at previous cases and what they've done in the past. I think, you know, that's what you'd understand. In this particular case, the board has been a tendency to approve these types of cases. I guess I'm referencing the recent, like, it was a State Farm?
Yes.
They approved it on two sides. Well, if you go back to, can you bring up the picture of looking at, yeah, right there? So, the sign, 'cause I think somebody had mentioned, you know, approving the State Farm sign, you know, that we're gonna have signs eventually on each level. When you approved the State Farm sign, you can see on the picture there, there's a sign on the top level, the business, I guess that business is no longer there, but that sign had been recently removed. And just a boot for thought, something to consider. But where the red guy, they do have a banner, and that's what it would look like, that's what I have.
Yeah, thank you.
If staff could clarify, the State Farm signage that was approved at last month's meeting is not on this structure in this image here.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Right.
Okay, anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone speaking in opposition?
I'm going to close the public portion of the hearing.
Motion's been made, second.
Second.
All right, second. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Price.
Aye.
Mr. Reiniger.
Aye.
Mr. Roberto.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Martin, any questions?
Well, I must admit, when I opened this packet up, I thought, oh, this'll be an easy one, I can just breeze through this one, 'cause I am a proponent of the, what I think the town is thinking about in terms of signage changes. This one is a little bit different, though, because the ones, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, but I think the ones we've approved in the past were due primarily to make, or to make people be able to see it when they were driving. These signs are not that necessarily so, especially the one in the back. The one, I don't think we've approved multiple signs for an internal parking lot. We've approved multiple signs where the visibility was an issue from Colrain Avenue. So that does give me a little bit of pause here, especially on the back one. The other concern I have here, and I think Mr. Reiniger brought this up last time you were here with State Farm, at the time I, I voted, he and I were on opposite sides of the issue, but I think he has a point here. And he may, may have changed his mind, but I'm, I'm concerned we're gonna have multiple, we're gonna have so many signs in this building that no one's gonna be able to see anything. 'Cause presumably, when, when the tenant here negotiated the rent for the, the part of the building that they're in, presumably that rent reflects the fact that they're not in prime location. So they went in there with their eyes wide open that they did not have visibility on Colrain Avenue, that they would have to rely upon the, the whatever signage was permitted under the lease and permitted under our zoning regulations. So I don't have a whole lot of sympathy here, and I'm not sure the sign, especially the one in the back, is gonna help anybody find this place. They're, they're gonna be in that back parking lot already, because they've seen the sign in the front. So, I'm definitely not inclined to approve the sign in the back. And the one in the front, again, I have the concern that was raised last week, or last month, that we're gonna wind up with every tenant in the building, in all of these buildings, wanting signs. And that just can't work. It is an office, it's a emergency care or NovaCare-
It's a physical therapy.
Physical therapy. You know, it's not, it's a place that a person goes with an appointment, you know, and I can, State Farm was kind of on the line, as far as I was concerned, 'cause people do, you know, they see a State Farm sign, they may need insurance, but you're not going to this place unless you have an appointment, and, and with the availability of Google and everything else, and presumably when they make appointments, they tell them where they're located. I think this is entirely different, and, and quite honestly, I'm not persuaded.
I understand completely that, obviously, it's a little bit of a stretch. The sign on the front is not on their tenant space, which is what put us in-
Right.
-this kind of situation, 'cause it's not actually on their frontage, so that's what put us into the situation where we have to go for the variance for that sign. I cannot completely understand also about the sign on the back, as it is facing in towards the other building. The problem my client's gonna run into is that the only other signage they have is a window vinyl on the door, so I understand you can't see that from the back parking lot, but you could easily walk past the, the windows trying to look at where you are. And again, this shopping center, for whatever reason, is, comes up all as one address, so I can understand you can see it from this side, but if you pulled around the back, you could easily get confused, depending on how well they explained it to you over the phone, about exactly where that, where that space is, since it's on that breezeway, which is not technically on the front of my, my tenant space. So I think that's the situation they're running into.
How long have they been there?
They just opened, so the banner that he was speaking of is a 30-day banner. They're under the realization that that banner will be removed before we get this signage approved. It's been up 28, or something like that now, so it's not gonna continue to stay up before all these signs are fabricated and approved and whatever, but they've been in there, I would say, three weeks or so, 'cause it was a little bit before they got that.
So without the variance, they're left with the sign on the pylon, is that basically it? And whatever site-
Without the variance on both signs, then all they'll have is the tenant panels on the pylon, yes.
And, and whatever sites, they can put something on the door, though.
They have an interior window vinyl that's already up on the door.
Okay, all right, okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Price?
I actually drive that back pathway there quite a bit, you know, 'cause it's a definitely shortcut versus Corian Avenue. So, and I, there is a lot of traffic that goes back there. I've seen, even that gets backed up, especially as you get down toward Panera and stuff, it's like, you could sit there for 10 minutes. So I understand that there's, there is quite a little bit of traffic that comes down through there, and, you know, I agree with Mr. Martin that, you know, that it's kind of weird to have that sign on the back, but I can actually see, because it is over your frontage, I can see that that would be okay, 'cause that is your frontage. Your frontage just isn't, you know, over a street or something, so.
Right. And I don't know, like she was saying, on the back of the building, I don't think they thought that was anything they could even propose, being that one of the signs is already on, technically on building frontage, so that's why they never considered doing it on the back of the building facing the parking lot, which is why they considered doing it over their tenant space. Now, we are too large, which is why we're in for the variance on that sign. We're too big for the, the tenant space that's there, so that's why the, the variance is on that sign, but I think that's why they didn't ever consider facing the parking lot as, I don't think they would anyways.
I mean, if they went, could, could the sign be brought down to code, the one that goes over the, the existing entrance now?
Um, I haven't spoken to them about that. I would say that there's definitely potential to do that. Actually, the sign that's on the breezeway was proposed a lot larger than it is now, which was originally fine with the landlord, once we tried to get the letter and kind of said, "Oh, I don't know," and backed away a little bit on that, and so they downsized that sign. So I'm sure they could make some kind of adjustments that needed to be made for the building frontage sign also.
That's all I have, thank you.
Just to, if staff could clarify, if that, that sign is proposed over the frontage of the tenant space, I think you're, if they can get that sign down to the one square foot per linear foot, we're not talking about such a significant variance then. We're talking about really in how the code is being read, because wall signs are permitted at a ratio of one square foot for each linear foot of building frontage. If you want to consider that tenant space as their building frontage, if they reduce that sign to the side, the one foot per, one square foot per linear foot of frontage, we would not need to be in front of this board and having this discussion. So that is the-
Do they have frontage?
Um, well, that's if you consider their, their entrance-
The north side of the building would be their frontage, okay.
So there was confusion between the applicant and staff about not only the size of that sign, well, not the sign, but the location of that, because the discussion was having that size of the sign based on that rear frontage, which isn't actually frontage. So that's where the confusion has come in. So just to clarify, the variance that is being requested is for the size of that sign on that north side of that building.
Not the e, not the west side. The west side is-
The west side is the, the breezeway sign, that's a separate variance from the north side.
We haven't lumped together that, so really it's not a separate variant, it's a separate variant.
Two variances that you need to consider-
Sure.
-in one request, yes.
I mean, I would go back to, you know, the pylon sign and available over the frontage as being the easiest way out of this, so that there's not major confusion anymore. And then you almost don't need anything. That, that's all I have for you.
Mr. Reyer?
I think this has been covered a couple times, so I'm gonna make very clear that I'd only be supportive of a sign of the square footage that's compatible with the linear frontage. So we're talking 23 square feet, not 57 square feet. And it would be over the doors and not in the back, that, that's correct.
Correct, yes, over the doors.
Do you know the size of the banner that is now on that breezeway?
Um, the banner, I believe was, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Jenna, I believe it was 32 square feet is what it was allowed, it was the maximum banner size that was allowed for the 30-day. I don't, I could be misspeaking. I don't have that for me. Whatever the maximum was, is what that banner is currently.
And is there currently a sign on the pylon, identifying?
The tenant panels are up.
What, just-
We got the variance to do, or we got the zoning certificate to do the tenant panels, obviously the, the no panels indoors, so we did that, and we got the certificate to do the temporary banner, which is on the breezeway currently.
I, I believe you mentioned it, what is the size of the pylon sign? I think you mentioned that.
They're 11 inches by 83 and a half. So they're long and skinny.
11 inches?
11 inches tight.
By what?
83 and a half.
83 inches.
So they're really long and-
That's a good spot.
That's typical, I guess, besides like I-Mark or one of the, I think I-Mark is taking up two spaces, so that's fairly typical for the tenant panel. Well, that's the only space they had left, so.
I guess I'm remiss, and I don't know, or can't visualize the pylon. Is there any way of increasing the pylon signage size?
Uh, it doesn't appear that there is. There's tenant panels above and below, and they're current tenants, so unless the landlord, I guess, works something out with them to move it around, I don't see how we would, how we'd expand that at all.
And that's probably further out than our setback would allow now, is it?
Can you clarify that question?
That, that existing pylon's probably further out than our current setbacks would allow anyway.
It's larger than the scope of the signs, signage you've allowed, so it's too tall, it's too-
Yeah, it's too everything.
It's too a lot of everything, so it's okay.
It's certainly non-conforming.
All right. We're asking for variance for two things, the sign of the door and the sign on the breezeway. The sign of the breezeway is this maximum amount of signage, it's not 28 square feet, it's 30 square feet.
The, the sign on the breezeway that is proposed-
47?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a different dimension.
You're looking at 49 square feet, okay. So we're over on both sides, correct?
Um, my understanding was that the sign on the breezeway would not be, it was not over 100 square feet, and again, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we've gone, we've gone over this a lot, and so I think I missed some things on it, but that sign is substantially, like I said, smaller than what was originally proposed, which Jenna said would be obviously beneficial. I think they were like 140 or something before. So we've gone down substantially there, and again, we can go down to what we need to go down to on their building frontage also. But full signs, and I understand also that you're not gonna really be able to see that sign from Colrain Avenue, but it does bring the attention from the front of that parking lot, that it is under that breezeway or around that breezeway, which is what draws the attention from the front.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I have, maybe, I'd like to hear some comment back, maybe even from other board members on the, on the thought I'm having. I think one of our responsibilities is to, to ensure property value, I think we'd all agree with that. And I, I feel like by allowing the signage that would be needed for this tenant and future tenants, would secure the value and the rents of that property. Since business begets other business, we're getting ready to have a great big empty building not very far from there. And I think it would behoove us to do anything that we can to keep that as desirable a location for other businesses as possible. Any feedback on, on any of that from other, other members of the board?
Well, I, I agree with you, I mean, but I, I'm just trying to figure out, I guess, I'm trying to figure out a compromise here.
That's exactly what I was gonna say, we're trying to figure out the best, so it's not, you're not, you're not setting up standard practice for the next jib, because we still got another half of the breezeway that somebody could want to go and put their sign on, too.
Right.
So now you've got, you know, potentially two signs in this area, so it's, we're just trying to make it less clutter and more sophisticated. We're trying to get Corian Township to look sophisticated.
I agree.
Right down Corian Avenue, and the more neon signs you put up, the more we look like Vegas. And that's not what we're looking for. We're looking for the Ken Woods and the, you know, that, that sort of look in our, on our Corian Township.
Well, we don't want to see a bunch of abandoned-
I completely agree with that.
That's what I'm afraid of.
So, we just, we've had to find that compromise where we're, we're not...
And then I guess the question would be, uh, parking, so the, the business is currently open.
Correct.
So, uh, is, does anyone have any idea where, where the folks are parking when they go and enter that building?
I, I can't speak to that.
I believe there's no handicap spots right outside the back.
Because they enter the, they can enter from the front or the back, there's parking on both sides.
That's true.
They, they, yes, they could walk onto the breezeway to it or park in the back of the lot. They can enter either way.
And, and, you know, I think the corgiware that we all use is that little bypass right there. I think here in the, in the year to come, people aren't going to be using that as much with Kroger.
It doesn't have any redevelopment.
Shifting away, so I don't, I don't know what we can be doing now to help ensure that that piece of property states viable.
Yeah, I will say too, I know Ian, Ian mentioned about other tenants, and she had said about the face changes, these particular signs are channel headers, um, so I don't know if you would take that into consideration or not. They would have to be removed and something else put up, unless they wanted to stay over there. There's really no way to do a face change on these particular signs, so that's, I don't know if that's something to think about. These particular signs, if another tenant were to come in, would have to be...
And that's, actually, that's very helpful. I mean, that's good information. It's not just a square box up there, it's, you know, I do windows come in and those are their signs, so.
I'm all done, thank you.
All right. Um, I'm, I'm with Tim, I, you know, Mr. Price, I go through the backside of that property often, and sometimes, you know, you would potentially miss that. So, I, I'm not opposed to having something over the, the frontage of the store, as we would call it, the north side of the store. Um, if, if we bring in the, the size change, is what I would recommend, as far as if I was to make a motion. Um, the signs on the front, yeah, I'm a little, I'm, I'm with Mr. Reiner, it seems a little bit big, but, you know, are we, how much, how far are we on for being within the code of that? I mean, since it's not really a frontage and it's really a breezeway and it doesn't belong to them, and it's really kind of...
Um, if you're talking square footage wise, I don't know the length of that breezeway.
Forty-eight, it's one hundred and forty-eight, just...
The, um, the way that staff approached that was a discussion about their frontage and how, you know, we don't, they were in the low twenties on linear footage of their frontage, um, and that's where I was recommending to the applicant to pare down the original sign that essentially took up that entire breezeway, um, and didn't, didn't provide a whole lot of clarification on exactly where they were under that breezeway. Um, so they have pared it down a bit as far as within the code. Um, I don't know that we really have something in the code that's going to deal specifically with that breezeway, because it's not the common pylon sign or round sign.
Let me simplify it. What, what would be the square footage if they were to have it on the backside of the building? Not over the doorway, but on the backside of the building.
Do you know the length of that side of the building?
So, so let's, let's just say if we were treating it as a square box, and it's, it's X and Y equal, if we were to, and this is really a discussion more than a question, but if we were to make both sides the same, the ones going to be on this breezeway, which would be at least a less offensive to me, the same size as on their, on their frontage, I would be more apt to make that recommendation as far as, you know...
I think you're going to max out at a hundred, because regardless of what that linear footage is along the back, that, that back wall, um, you're going to max out at a hundred. If it's, if the building's longer than a hundred feet, it's a hundred and fifty feet, you're still going to max out at a hundred square feet of signage.
Okay, but what we've done in the past, and if you look across the street at Longhorn, they've got signage all around three sides of the building, so, you know, if it's equal signage on two sides of the buildings, we're treating it, business as a business, rather than, it's not planned, whatever, but, you know, then it's fair, as we're, we're allowing the neighbors across the street to do. So, that, that's my opinion, is, you know, if they're like signage and like size and they're matching, I would be more apt to approve it, rather than having a gargantuan sign here and a smaller sign there, at least it's, it's symmetrical.
Well, it is a little different though, because despite the fact that you and Mr. Price, when you're robbing the banks and going, using the getaway in the back, that, Longhorn, there is a, an access drive there on, on the backside of Longhorn, right?
There's no, no signage on the backside.
It's on the three signs, I've never noticed.
The, the north, south, or north, south and east side.
Yeah. See, I, I, I'm more inclined to do something to allow them to do the breezeway sign. Now, I, I guess my other question relative to that is, are there other tenants in this building that are going to be coming in? I mean, I don't know who else is in this building. We, and I, there's no answer to that question, that's sort of rhetorical, I guess.
So, a miracle here or something there.
My understanding is the building, uh, on the front facing Colerain Avenue occupied that whole space, um, there was a lot of extra space for them, um, which is where the landlord worked out, well, you know, you don't need that much space, and he split that space. My understanding of it is that along that backside of the building, there is no access or doors or anything like that currently, and it's not proposed to put in, to split those other spaces, i- if that's what you mean, to where there's going to be four along the back and the four along the front, or whatever the number is, um, because there is not currently any windows or anything along the backside of that.
I guess my inclination, and then I'll throw it off to you guys, is to work with them in terms of coming up with something acceptable over the breezeway, and then let them rely upon, uh, door signage, you know, the vinyl door signage for the, uh, for the back, and not allow anything over the back or the side.
Okay. That, that part...
They can be persuaded.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll have the discussion part here in a minute. Um, so, I don't have anything else to add, and we'll make a motion to close, as far as making a motion.
I'll move to close the public part of this, uh, request.
We're actually in the, into the...
The board part.
Board part, so we'd need a motion at this point to either approve or deny, or make a motion so that it's what you would recommend. Anyone have any suggestions?
Can I ask a quick question, because I'm, I'm not clear on this, I guess?
Sure.
The breezeway sign, if I'm looking at this correctly, it's forty-nine square feet?
Yes.
And if it was, what would be the square footage that would not require a variance?
The breezeway sign requires a variance because it is not actually on their tenant space, yes. Um, I don't have a square footage because it's not on the tenant's space, so there are no...
Let me ask a question a little differently, because we, we're saying that they do have some frontage on Colerain Avenue, correct?
No, sir.
No, they do not.
They have none?
Correct.
Okay, I misunderstood, and I thought before that you said they had some, that we were assuming they had some frontage on Colerain, and they don't.
They have a sign within the, the front placard, it's the North Gate Square sign, and it's eleven inches tall. That's the only signage they have out front, currently.
But, and they, their space does not run through the Colerain Avenue numbers?
No, there's a miracle here, if you see the picture that's up there currently, it's what's, what you see.
See, then I go back to the situation, and again, I, I certainly understand Mr. Kelly's point, and I, I tend to agree with it, but when this space was designed, this space was designed presumably for a doctor's office or a dentist's office or some other that did not require pedestrian traffic and did not require a lot of vehicular traffic going in there. So, again, presumably the rent reflects that fact. So, um, you know, if they wanted a higher visibility site, they should have picked another site, that's about it. And I hate to sound pressed, but that's really what it comes down to. Um, they're presumably paying less rent because they don't have the frontage, and I don't, I'm just concerned we're going to wind up with a plethora of signs out there. Anyway.
My, my comment would be that the breezeway cover is in neutral territory, it doesn't belong to any tenant, just as a connection between two buildings. Uh, the signage over the door, uh, identifies their entrance into their property. Um, Miracle or, or anyone else, State Farm could put signs up on that breezeway, but the breezeway is just a connection point, it's not a, um, structure that is identified with that building.
That being said...
I'd be more inclined to go over the back, the entrance door, uh, as, as opposed to, um, uh, signage, vinyl signage on the door itself.
And that point's well taken, and, but again, while we've made exceptions in the past, we've done it for safety reasons, so when people are driving by, they can, they don't pass the property and miss it.
I don't think you're going to have, it's, this is sitting in a cove, if you look, you're not going to see this unless, until you're right in front of it anyway. For safety purposes, on having, even on the front of the building, it's, it's a moot point. It's, it is more for just allowing them to have good business and allowing people to find them.
I think really what we're doing is, we're just saying, hey, your frontage is right over your door, therefore, if you go to current code, keep the pylon, it's a non-issue, and I'd like to make that, that motion.
Okay, so you want to, the, your motion is to make the sign within the, the scope of the square footage allowed for over the front of the building, and nothing along the breezeway?
Correct.
So, we have a motion. Anyone want to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, second, discussion?
A, a stupid question, and this goes back to the frontage issue. Because they don't have frontage, they're still entitled to that sign above the doorway, though. They don't have any frontage on, on a public way, that's what I was getting at.
That is, that is their frontage, it's all, all sets, I mean, that's the front door. So, that is their frontage, whether, whether it's facing Coring Avenue or it's facing Springdale Road, it's, that's their frontage.
Okay.
So, and then to be fair, that's, if they're, if they're within the scope of size, I don't believe there's even a zoning issue, because that's their frontage.
Okay. Could we, uh, uh, possibly consider, based on some of the things that, that the applicant had said, the whole complex is under the same building number? So, if people are using GPSs and whatnot, is that breezeway possibly a good location for a building number?
You got one right next to it.
One right at the very top of the line.
I saw it, but it's, yeah, but it, uh, it's oriented to the south.
Well, and there's also one right here to the, the side.
Yeah, under the breezeway.
Yeah.
Yes, I just, I'm thinking if, hey, we're at ninety-nine hundred, it's easy to see whatever that block is, but, okay, so nobody likes that.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion?
Close.
All right. Motion, the second has been made to allow signage on the frontage of the property as long as it's within, within the scope of their, so really it's a moot point, they're going to be denied.
So, to, your motion is to deny the variance request?
Would be yes. So, let's rephrase that, and we've had to, we'll have to make a motion to deny it, because they'll have to be within code anyway. So, can we have someone bring a motion to that effect?
Will our current code allow that to be their frontage?
That's, I'm just...
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think so, that's...
It's the front door, I mean, how could you...
But I agree with you, I'm just saying, is, is that what the code says?
So, we're denying both?
Both would be denied.
Make a motion that we deny both.
I second.
Motion, second, deny both, discussion?
I hate, I really hate to do that to them, but I really do, just trying to, I wish we could come up with something else.
I agree, I agree with you, but, like you said, how many signs can we fit up there?
Well, and it's stretching it by putting on a, a neutral piece of property that really doesn't belong to the building, so it's, it's a very big stretch.
I understand.
Any more discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Reiner?
Aye.
Mr. Roberto?
Aye. Motion's been denied. Case number BZA two thousand fifteen dash thirteen, this is a variance to construct a new twenty-seven thousand square foot multifamily dwelling with seventy units. It's found in our code book article section seven point three, point one, and in article section thirteen point three and fourteen point five. The location is Banning Road and John Rose, Cincinnati, Ohio. The applicant is Cincinnati Metropolitan Housing Authority, and the owner is Touchstone Property Services. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
There are three variances that are being requested with this application, variance for development standards, number of parking spaces and lot buffers.
Please, please pause for a moment, our staff...
Or you can go ahead.
Okay. Thank you.
Applicant approached zoning staff on September fourth and was denied a zoning certificate for a seventy-unit multifamily residential structure known as West Union Square. Um, just to clarify, one piece of the site development standards, um, requiring a twenty-five foot setback, this has been achieved in newer versions of the plan, um, that the applicant has been working with staff on. However, the, um, the proposal does not meet the minimum lot area of six thousand square feet per unit. Uh, the applicant, uh, applicant's proposal is short of the required number of parking spaces by three spaces, and the, um, twenty-five foot requirement for a lot buffer when adjacent to an R-six zoning district is not met. The site is the location of, along, um, John Rose Avenue, with many of these structures now demolished. What you have to the left, to the west here is Colerain Avenue, and to the south is Banning Road. Current zoning for the property is split between R-seven and B-three, uh, with B-three adjacent to the west and R-six adjacent to the east. Uh, there are quite a few pieces of this development plan, but I plan to only go through with you those, those that are pertinent to our discussion this evening. This is a four points, roughly four point six acre site over several different parcels. Just a heads up, the, uh, this image is now oriented, oriented so that north is to the left on your screen. So, uh, this is Banning Road here, which is actually south. It's a three-story, seventy-unit building, um, which requires, excuse me, one second, let me turn my density. The density for the area, which is requiring six thousand square feet per unit, um, is actually the township's most dense zoning classification for residential. Um, that would only allow seven units per acre on this particular site. Uh, this proposal is for fifteen units per acre. Um, before we get too concerned with that, I'd like to point out that the St. Martin's Development over in Mount healthy, which is very similar to this, was actually approved at nearly eighteen units an acre. So, um, we are looking for more dense, um, more dense of an allowance than the code allows, but I would like to also point out that previously on this exact same site, there, there were eighty-two units, and the proposal is only for seventy units. So, while we're looking for an increase in density, um, we're actually looking for a decrease from what was there in the past. Ninety-seven parking spaces are, um, are proposed around the site. This entrance to John, um, excuse me, John Rose Avenue here to the, this would be east, at the top of your screen, um, would dump directly into the site. Another entrance on Banning Road is proposed, and the site, the entrance onto the site via John Rose to the north would actually be closed. Um, this is a point of discussion between the applicant, as well as several of the neighboring property owners, um, who are working together to find a, a good solution for how to, how to effectively close that without creating any issues in the neighborhood, um, and this is part of the reason that the applicant is unable to meet, um, the parking space requirement. They come pretty close, they're three spaces short. Um, I also want to point out that on this, the parking space requirement, uh, the development is for a senior living facility, which the applicant defines as fifty-five and over. Um, in our zoning code, we do define, um, senior living facilities as sixty-five and over, and that would actually change the parking requirement down to one space per, per bed, um, and would reduce the number required. Give you an idea of what's on the site today, this is looking from, uh, John Rose on the north, Coring Avenue again, uh, you can see your Rantish map here, Coring Avenue to your west, uh, this is John Rose, and so this is if we come into John Rose, you can see, um, this is Clifford to the right here, um, and then the, the majority of the site in front of you, that's vacant. Again, looking a little more into the site, uh, do want to point out the buffer yard on this side of the site, this is the eastern side of the site, this is what is abutting the R-six residential... This is what is abutting the R6 residential and therefore requires 25 feet of buffer yard and landscaping. One of the variance requests is to leave what is existing in the riparian buffer, there is a stream back behind that vegetation there, so rather than tearing that down and requiring them plant new trees, staff feels it might be a little more efficient to go ahead and leave what's there. This is again looking at that same buffer yard. This is looking from John Rose to the east into the site, and then just further looking essentially the exact opposite way of where those first images we were looking at, looking to the north. So again, to reiterate, the three variance requests, first one being for that minimum lot area of 6,000 square feet per unit, total acreage of 4.6 units would only allow for 33 units by rate for this development. Applicant is proposing 70 units within the three-story building, and the site was previously home to 82 units. With respect to the required number of parking spaces, 1.5 spaces per efficiency or single bedroom dwelling unit and two spaces per dwelling unit for multiple bedroom dwellings are required. Again, this is a, this is proposed to be a development for 55 and over, and our, the Corrin Township zoning resolution does designate that housing reserved for older adults specifying 65 years or older is only required one space per bed. Again, CMHA is working with neighboring property owners on the exact situation of the closure and proposed solutions. Those solutions, those proposed solutions have eliminated the ability for the applicant to fully meet the parking minimum space requirements. Again, the lot buffers, R7 adjacent to B2, which is to your west, particularly Clifford, there is a zero-foot buffering requirement, and the R7 adjacent to the R6 requires 25 feet of buffer yard. There is a generous setback proposed on that eastern property line along R6, and then of course the existence of the substantial line of vegetation screening and the stream may not be appropriate to require a new landscaping buffer. All that said, staff has found that the variance requested is substantial. The property in question would not likely yield a reasonable return without the variance. The owner's predicament could not feasibly be obviated by other means. The variance would not adversely affect the delivery of government services, and the essential character of the neighborhood would not immediately be negatively impacted by allowing the addition, no, excuse me, the variances. Staff does feel that substantial justice would be done by granting the variances with conditions. Those conditions include that the applicant must leave the existing vegetation and riparian buffer along the eastern property line to screen the proposed development from the adjacent R6 zoning district, as well as that the applicant must demonstrate that all other sections of the Corrin Township zoning resolution will be met, including but not limited to. And I just want to point out that this, this list looks rather lengthy because we just didn't have the information provided. In a lot of cases, we had most of the information but one piece missing, and so we do feel that the applicant will meet these pretty easily. But those sections include outdoor lighting, design standards for the size of the parking stalls, streetscape buffer parking areas with more than 20 spaces, parking area landscaping, landscaping island locations, and then permanent on-premises signs.
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Hello, thank you, more, listening to your request, but thanks to staff for doing such a good job of presenting.
Name and address.
Sorry, Joe Norton, I work for Cincinnati Metropolitan Housing Authority, 1627 Western Avenue, 45214.
Very much.
This has been a three-year partnership with Colrain to get this project to where it is now. The drawings that were submitted to staff for review are at 80%. The architect is working through the remaining requirements needed to pass building. One of the things that wasn't mentioned is the design difficulty of this particular site. To the east side of the property, the creek side, that's also part of the 100-year flood play, which makes it very difficult to design something for the size of this site, really constrained by it, using federal dollars, knowing that disturbing that 100-year flood site would create additional issues for the township. So it'd be very careful in the design of the whole site itself. Want to make sure that we give Colrain a property that both CMHA and Colrain can be proud of, very similar to our South Martin site, which we think, we know will be delivered to Colrain Township. So unless there's any questions or questions come up, I'd be happy to answer it.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor?
Jennifer Pond, representing Clifford and Smith, Baccatory, at 7390 Corrin Avenue. And I am actually very grateful to have CMHA as a, I mean, a pro state department township, considering what we've had to deal with behind us. We have 140 employees that work at the Colrain location, and it's always nice to know that things have changed. You know, it used to be where we'd have lockdown at 7:00 and 8:00, which is, you know, unbelievable. You don't think about those things. Now that the fact that CMHA's kind of, you know, our employees are excited again. They can actually go out there and walk in the neighborhood. And the proposed trails that they're having on-site, this will be, you know, very exciting to our employees, because they'll be allowed to at least participate, you know, walking again safely, when they thought that wasn't very safe at all. You know, CMHA's worked with us very closely. We've met with them on a few occasions to talk about what the issues would be if they built in proximity to our property, and we were, we were welcome, you know, we had our arms moving out to them. This would be such a great improvement. You hear me say that over and over again, but it's also very needed in Corrin Township, a senior housing, living center. Our demographics in Corrin Township are a lot as well. So I, I'm 42, except that, you know, any changes in the variances were okay with them being closer to us from the property. What was there was close to us and was very exciting. We used to look at vacant buildings with some windows, some without windows, and we saw drug crime 24/7. It used to be, you know, like a drug trade, 24 hours. Our security cameras were on a continuous loop. And again, I am just so grateful that we're going to have a really good need for that to want to work with us. To speak to where they have, I think I'm drawing the T-zone, I need to bring it up. And to speak, so what they were talking about with losing some parking spaces, and you'll hear from Echol Plumbing as well on that issue. We talked with them about having, you know, a different type of, like a cul-de-sac, we talked to them about the T-zone, and those proposed at that time just would have cost Corrin Township, and they were to CMHA and to Echol Plumbing and Clifford, anywhere between $60,000 to $100,000 depending on the size of the cul-de-sac or T-zone. So what had been proposed and what they were working on was they gave up some parking spaces without having to take away the Burt or Echol Plumbing, which I thought was very nice for them to be able to work with us on that. And so the whole issue was about providing an avenue for the fire trucks to turn their trucks in and out. And so they actually proposed to develop like a little turnaround, and they'd have a gate that the fire department would be able to have the chain and access, and very close access to their building or Echol or Clifford for that matter. We wanted to be able to have access on Clifford, on John Rose, without worrying about taking away our parking, and that was met. So in conclusion, I hope that you support this.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor?
Jim Acoff, 2942, and I'm right next door. We've had a lot of discussion over this, it's gone on a long time. Anybody that's not in favor of this has never been down there, never been down there. I've been there since 2001. Two murders, within ten months of each other, probably within a couple hundred feet. Pretty, get your heart going when they call my house at 3:00 in the morning. Hey, the alarm's going off. What do I expect now? I've got you. So mine favorite is yes. Anybody that's not seen Martin Pauling Grove, very similar, go see it, it's impressive. Colrain needs us, we really need us. Three parking spots, beautiful for older people, they don't have two cars like we do, three cars. So kind of a viewpoint on that. The T, we've worked on that, a lot of that is fire department driven, and I guess, because they cannot turn that fire truck around on our property. So that's what kind of sent the T. They were talking about that, and we said, no, just kind of push the drug trade down. It was every day, you could see it, in the street, quick pants, every day. So the T is a good idea, the township has kind of stepped up to probably move the light up to light that. Win for CMHA, win for us, win for Clifford. So this is a no-brainer, no-brainer. Colrain needs us. Keep the older residents that they can live here, they have the downside, they can still live in the township. The units are great, if you never get anyone, take the time to go through, it's normal. Not there yet, a few more years, but, you know, it's fine. The marketing, you know, it's been there two years. Two years, phenomenal. Still up kept, drive-through. Anybody that has doubts on this, there's no doubt, this is going to work compared to what we have. You know, this started three years ago, okay? I know how it started, I made a phone call. Within about a half hour, Jim Rowan was in my parking lot. That rolled off, and everybody knew how that went from there. So you guys got to support this, this is just moving forward for it.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor?
Jennifer Sharp, 4200 Springdale Road, Lieutenant with the Police Department. I have been here since 2015 here, and I have to say, this is completely a breath fresh here. Worked very hard for many years to get those apartments shut down. You know, as Mr. Acoff said, we had two homicides, which I was lucky enough to be working at night, so got to be a part of that, dealt with all of the aspects that went on with those apartments, just to have those gone is amazing. I've also been able to actually go out and canvas the neighborhood there on John Rose in respect to what it would be like with having the streets kind of cut off, with having that senior living there, with those apartments gone. Nobody was against it. Everybody that lived on John Rose Avenue that I spoke with were for it. So they were very excited about the entire idea, but a lot of them even said, you know, that they have a great place for them to go, so, which I thought was fantastic. I have been able to see the outside of the one in Mount Healthy, and it is beautiful. You know, the idea of not having to spend so much time, energy, and resources, and what we had there, and actually having a place that we can work, I mean, we work decently with CMHA all the time on all, any of their buildings, and it's always been a pleasure to be able to work with them. You know, we have one-on-one contact with them, so I know this is going to be a great site, and I hope you guys do approve everything, so looking forward to seeing it come up.
Thank you. Anyone else else speaking in favor? Anyone speaking in opposition? I'll move to close the public portion of the hearing. Second. Motion, the second has been made. Please roll call.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Reiniger?
Aye.
Mr. Roberto?
Aye.
Mr. Martin, you have questions?
Well, first of all, since I just turned 64, I'm glad the township defined senior 65. No, and I live just on the other side of Scrubal, and I have walked through this area before it was torn down, and it was a little scary, even though I was on the way to the bank or whatever, just to get some exercise. So no, I'm totally in favor of this, and I think there's all sorts of reasons why we should do whatever we can to approve it. I did one question, though, and that, I'm glad the police department's here, because I do have kids that go to Scrubal Elementary, and, you know, God forbid anything were to happen to Scrubal Elementary, it's going to take longer for the police and or fire department to get to Scrubal under this plan, and has the police department and the fire department taken that into consideration?
We have, and that's why I believe that the two entrances, having the extra one there on Banning Road cuts that time. So it would actually be beneficial with the two entrances, and that's why they...
So they can actually get, I guess that they can get through, there's a, I think the lady, I'm sorry to remember your name, Jennifer, I think she alluded to a gate that you guys can...
On the other side. Yeah, fire department wise, yeah, they have other apartments that are the same way, with the park complexes, where if there's a gate, fire department employees would have access to it, would make an entrance.
Well, what I like, I like the fact you've got that substation on Colrain, if anything were to happen, you guys could get to Scrubal or Wygal or anywhere, play very quickly. But now with this, you're going to have to go down to Banning, then down to memory lane, right? And then up to John Rose?
No, that's a driveway that they're putting there from Banning to their property, and then also tie into John Rose.
Okay, so you, as long as you guys have taken that into consideration, I'm fine with it. Okay, that's all I have.
So yeah, okay. Mr. Price?
I just have a couple, couple questions for the gentleman from the Metropolitan Housing. What's the average household size going to be for these units?
Senior living, one, two bedrooms.
Okay, so is that normally then man and wife in one bedroom?
It could be, or it could be two bedrooms. We have maximum occupancy, so if not family...
Right.
It's the leaseholder, and I guess you're looking at, would someone be allowed to have someone move in with them? It would be allowed to do that if they notified us that that was actually happening, so we knew it was happening inside that unit.
Okay.
So it doesn't, who would done from having guests spend the night, doesn't do any of those type of things, though.
Okay, that's really, how many, how many two bedrooms, are there any three bedrooms in this?
There are no three bedrooms in this development. I knew someone might ask me the total unit makeup, I believe there are 12 two-bedroom units.
There's a list in here, I think of those. Yeah, they've got, well, page is a number, but on one of these pages, it lists 22 one bedroom, 27...
It's in our notes also, right, letting's 58 one bedroom to two, and 12 two-bedroom area. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Reiniger?
No questions.
Mr. Kelly?
No questions.
So just, this is a question to staff, so is this going to be defined, is it 65 or 55 page unit?
Technically, it's not, by our zoning code, it's not defined as senior living. The applicant is saying that it's 55 and over. The reason I was pointing out 65 and over is just that is where we happen to define with respect to parking spaces specifically.
So their definition is 55, and we're just not calling it senior living as a result of that?
Correct.
Perfect, thank you. I have another question.
I'll move, we approve the request as presented by staff.
No second to the motion? Motion, the second has been made for approval with staff's findings. Anyone else have discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Reiniger?
Aye.
Mr. Roberto?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thank you.
Where do I sign up?
Yeah, I was just going to ask the same thing. Along's the waiting list already.
Mr. Price and I are going to room together. Mr. Price and I are going to room together.
And that's, that is a very sharp facility to govern.
We have a waitlist of over a hundred people wanting to get into South Martin.
What's the average rent for a place?
It's based on income, so it's affordable rents. I would say the average rent at South Martin is upwards of around five fifty.
Okay. Very good.
Can we make that a condition that Mr. Price and I get first bid?
Yeah. Is that with utilities?
All right. Do we have any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Okay, and our next meeting is going to be November the eighteenth, correct?
If that's okay with this board, I don't have anything on the agenda currently for October.
Okay, and we've, under administrative matters, we're going to be discussing some text amendments.
I'm hopeful that we can do that via email. I do have some drafted text for you to kind of begin the discussion.
Very good. I see nothing else on the agenda. Anyone else have any?
Minutes.
Minutes will be presented to us at the next meeting, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Are you, can you send them to us by email ahead of time, please?
I can, yes.
Thank you very much. All right, then we adjourn. Anybody want to make a motion to that second?
I'll move that we adjourn. A second.
All right, second, and roll call, please. Who said?
I did.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Price.
Aye.
Mr. Reiniger. Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Roberto.
We adjourn.